And we'll begin tonight's meeting with a prayer, if you will join me in prayer. Oh God, our healer, show your compassion for the whole human family that is in turmoil and burdened with illness and with fear. Come to our aid as the coronavirus spreads. Heal those who are sick, support and protect their families and friends from being infected. Grant us your spirit of love and self-discipline so that we may come together, working to control and eliminate the coronavirus. Strength and courage. Those public health services and in the medical profession. Caregivers, nurses, attendants, doctors, all who commit themselves to caring for the sick and their families. Inspire, give insight and hope to all researchers focused on developing a vaccine. Sustain all workers and business owners who suffer loss of livelihood due to shutdowns, quarantines, and other restrictions and protect and guard all those who must travel. Hold in your gentle embrace all who have died and who will die this day. Comfort their loved ones in their despair. Heal our world, heal our bodies, strengthen our hearts and our minds, and in midst of turmoil, heal us both in peace. In Christ's name we pray, amen. Now, if you will join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now formally call the meeting, which has been duly posted of the Harlison City Commission order. And welcome everyone who's participating on this Zoom meeting of the city commission. And for those who are out there watching along as we live stream the meeting. We thank you for your cooperation and your patience during this strange and difficult time as we have to meet in a way to protect others. So with that, we go on to item, the next item, which is citizen communication. I believe we have four individuals who've signed up for citizen communication. We'll just have Amanda call them one by one and allow them to say what they need to say during this portion of our meeting.
Okay, Mayor, the first one that I have is Johnny Rodriguez. He did not ask to be called, but I can read his comments if that's okay.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, it's Johnny Rodriguez, address 1514 Burke Court. The topic is drainage upgrades. The drainage system in Harlingen needs to be dramatically upgraded and improved. We cannot keep settling for minimum upgrades, if that's what they call it. In the last two years, our neighborhood secluded areas had flooded. And if Hurricane Hannah would have dropped the amount of rain that was predicted, it would have flooded again. You all asked us to file a claim with FEMA to get funds for this very reason, so I don't see why you cannot put them to use.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go to the next person to sign up.
The next one is Ron Losano, Mayor, 2410 Riverside Drive. And he wants to speak on government code, so I'll go ahead and give him a call right now.
Sorry, the person you were trying to reach has avoided.
No answer, Mayor. Proceed with the next one. Jennifer Garcia, 1918, El Cielo Linda Court. And I will place a call right now.
Hello?
Hello, Jennifer, this is Amanda Lisondo, the city of Harlingen. And you asked, you asked to be called and you have two minutes. So I'm going to start the clock right now and then we'll go from there. Okay, one moment, please. Okay, you may start now.
City Commissioners and Mayor Chris Boswell. I would like to comment on the handling of Hurricane Hannah and our drainage issues. As a citizen of Harlingen, I am disappointed. As a team, we have time and time again tried to approach you all professionally. We even simply tried to voice our opinions in the last P and D meeting. Even today, we were told it would be on the agenda and then it wasn't. Our team is working tirelessly to meet you where you are, and we are having trouble getting a straight answer. I can only imagine how my fellow citizens feel. You may have an explanation, but because of your silence and indecisiveness, you've come across as mistrustful to your citizens. Let's talk about the drainage. Why did it take a hurricane to clean our drainage ditches? Why are they not maintained year round? Our taxes have gone up, but we don't see a result of this money. Hurricane Hannah was a category one storm. Several areas already flooded. What will happen if a stronger storm hits? What will you say to the thousands of households who will be forever displaced by your lack of maintenance and mismanagement of tax money? I ask you, what will you say to your voters that it had enough? Recently, you publicly have said that this was a quote unquote success. But I assure you, what victims would not say the same. I implore you, do the right thing. Make sure we have stricter standards for new subdivisions. Make sure you do year round maintenance. Sandbags less than 24 hours before the storm is not a plan. It's a patchwork job that creates unnecessary panic. I invite you to find our page on Facebook called Reinvent Harlingen Drainage. Look at the homes and families that were destroyed by the last two floods and ask yourself, am I doing the right thing? Because your voters are watching and our team is relentless. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now I'll go to the next one, Mayor. And that is Juan Garcia. And I will call him right now.
Hi, this is Juan V. Garcia. I'm sorry, Mr. Crow. Please leave message after the tone. Thank you.
Juan, this is Amanda Lisondo from the city of Harlingen, calling you in regards to your public comment request. Thank you. We have Ron Losano, Mayor. Hello, this is Amanda. Oh, is this Mr. Garcia? Oh, okay, one moment, I'm going to continue speaking until anyone home. Hello?
Hello.
Okay, you have two minutes, so let me set the clock.
Am I loud and clear?
Yes. You may start now.
Thank you, Mayor Boswell and City Commissioners. I have a few items I want to address. Number one, public comment. At the July 22nd P and D meeting, about 27 public comment voices were dismissed when every member of the P and D, as well as the city managers, knew that we were waiting to be called in public comments. If it had been a city meeting, a live city meeting, you would have heard clearly the audible objections from the audience. So I am asking the attorneys to form an internal investigation as to why the 27 citizens were not allowed to speak at the July 22nd P and D meeting and to please never allow that travesty to happen again. Just today, I received reports that people were not allowed to speak today because it didn't pertain to the meeting. Citizens should be able to join in during citizen participation, just like I am now. And the city shouldn't be playing games to try and suppress Harlingen voices. Number two, drainage committee. I accepted the invitation from the P and D chairman to lead a committee to propose drainage solutions granted that it would be an official meeting, I'm sorry, an official committee authorized and recognized by you and the city. I have sent you all an email regarding this committee and would appreciate a response back. And I look forward to being of assistance in solving Harlingen's contribution to the flood crisis in the Rio Grande Valley. Number three, the flood crisis in the Rio Grande Valley. Contrary to the city manager's declaration of mission accomplished, Hurricane Hannah, a category one hurricane, exposed a fragile and outdated drainage system in the city of Harlingen. Sanitary sewer open flows are E T T Q violation and a direct result of floodwaters inundating our sanitary sewer system. Please visit our page, our Facebook page, Reinvent Harlingen Drainage, to see the videos of the raw sewage pumping out of the sewers and onto our streets and into the stormwater system. Number four, leadership. Mayor Commissioners, I want you all to be successful and I want you all to be honorable public servants. We are on your side because we want you to.
Two minutes, Mr. Garcia.
Not by greed, but by good deeds. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
That's it, Mayor.
All right, then we'll go on to the next item, which is the, which is board recognition. We have a couple tonight. We'd like to recognize First Enrique Del Hau, who's accepted service as a member of utility board trustees. And so we want to express our appreciation to him for agreeing to serve on that very important board. Thank Commissioner Della Rosa for appointing him. And so, Mr. Del Hau, thank you. Appreciate your service. And the second, second is Fabian Borrego, who has agreed to serve on our audit committee board, our audit committee. We appreciate his willingness to serve on that very important committee that does a lot of really good work for our committee and in representing the business community on the audit committee. So Fabian, thank you very much for being here tonight and for accepting that position on our audit committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for serving.
Appreciate it. Takes a long time to fill that position. I'm glad you stepped forward and volunteered.
No problem, thank you.
All right, the next item, and we'll send these certificates to you and we hope that you enjoy them. Amanda's really stepped it up on the, on the way these certificates look. They look pretty, they look, they look really professional now. Good job, Amanda. All right, thanks. Next item is the approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 1st, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing on is her motion to approve the minutes is presented.
So moved. Second.
We have motion, the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Next item is item 3A through E, the consent agenda, is her motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
We have motion, my Commissioner Leal, second by Commissioner Della Rosa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item four, consideration possible action to propose a desired tax rate for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Schedule a public hearing to be held Wednesday, September 16th, 2020 at 5:30 PM and authorize the publishing of required notice for said public hearing.
Mayor, excuse me? Mayor?
Yes.
Ron Losano just called that he would like to speak on this item.
Okay. Let's go ahead and get him on the line.
Good afternoon.
Ron, this is Amanda, you have two minutes.
Thank you. In the course of two of the past three meetings you all have conducted, the Texas Open Meetings Act has been violated twice. Though several efforts were made to alert you to potential violation of the act, my pleas are for naught as of now. It's your custom, tradition, or protocol not to respond to common persons' contentions? And during this citizen communication portion, even if we were told that the place where I'm fire, only a court of equity can be called on to remedy a flagrant persistent pattern of total violations since the past September. Now you propose a voter approval operating tax rate, formerly termed the effective tax rate, as optionally having two plausible rates without telling us which one you've opted for. Further, an example that 316,936 is equivalent to one cent is of little import in that you propose to raise the known revenue tax rate by almost two cents. How much effort does it take to derive figures readily available for persons to have a reasonable discussion of what it is you all do with our money? For instance, last year, a former staffer touted the mantra at a public hearing, no new taxes in 14. This type of lack of transparency is unbecoming then and now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So go, we'll continue on with the item four and we'll have Robert make his presentation on the item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners and city staff. The Texas, the Texas tax code requires that when a proposed tax rate exceeds the known revenue tax rate, the taxing unit must vote on the proposed rate. Record the vote and schedule one public hearing on the proposal, on the proposal before the tax rate can be adopted. The tax rate being proposed is .619849 and does, and does exceed the known revenue tax rate of .601434. The proposed tax rate is lower than the rate that was adopted in the previous year. This rate has been used to calculate the property tax revenues in the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. It once in tax, it once in change in the tax rate equals $316,936. The Texas tax, tax code section 2606 requires the city to publish notice and hold a public hearing before adopting a tax rate. The advertisement will be published notifying the public of the hearing in accordance to the Texas tax code. We propose that date to be September 16th, 2020, and staff recommends this.
All right, are there any, any questions? Then is there a motion to?
Sorry, Mayor, I was.
To schedule a public hearing.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I did have a question, but my, I was muted. I'm sorry about that. I had a question for Robert. So it states on here that you all are saying this year's no new revenue tax rate. And then the, the second section says this year's voter approval tax rate. So what's the, what's the difference between this and what we did last year?
So the known revenue tax rate is the equivalent of the effective tax rate of the previous year. And the voter approval rate is the, is the equivalent of the rollback rate of the previous year. So the known revenue tax, the known revenue rate would be lower floor that we, that we would go with without having to have a meeting. And the voter approval rate is the highest that, that rate that we can go to without going to the voters.
And, and so the voter approval tax rate, when was, I don't know, when, when was that approved?
That's, that's what we're coming, that's what this meeting is for, to, to propose that rate. So we did the calculation, our certified totals came in on, on July 25th. That was the last day we can get them. And this calculation was calculated and now we're bringing it to you for, for consideration.
So is there an increase between what you all did last year and what we're doing in September of this coming year?
It's actually a small decrease of last year's rate. Last year's rate, if you remember, it was .63, 63 cents. And so this year, we're proposing a slightly higher rate, .61984, or a slightly lower rate, .619849. So it was a rate of 63 last year, Commissioner, and we're proposing a rate of .619849 for next fiscal year, which is a lower rate.
Okay, but in essence, it's still a tax increase, correct?
No.
Well, yeah, it is. It's, it's an increase, but it's a lower one from last year. It's still an increase.
The lower tax rate, but the revenue that it generated.
The proposed tax rate is lower than last year by over, by over one cent.
Right.
And there, and we don't, we will not exceed, that number will not, will not generate enough revenue to require voter approval. We will be below it, but because it does generate more income, we have to vote on the, on the tax rate.
Right, but so in, in essence, it's a lower tax increase.
It is a lower tax rate.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And then this tax increase is, from what I understand, is to satisfy the debt service? Can you explain a little bit more on that? Because we're using this money for what exactly?
So this tax, this tax rate includes maintenance and operation, M and O, which we use for operations, and nine cents of the INS, which goes towards paying debt service payments? That answers your question?
Well, because I'm looking at all these, these bonds and certificate of obligations. So that is, is going to be used for what you're talking about maintenance.
So our tax rate, our tax rate composition has to include a component to satisfy debt service payment. Our component to satisfy that debt service payment is approximately nine cents, .094087. So that component will go towards just satisfying the debt service payments of the, this budgeted period of 2021.
I'm sorry, Robert, I'm sorry, I knew what M and O stood for, but what does INS stand for?
INS stands for interest and sinking. So that, that'll go towards our, our debt service payments of, of the budgeted period.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Every, every year, the tax rate has two components. One is for maintenance operations and the other is for interest and sinking, which is for, which is for debt service.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other, any other questions? All right, then is there a motion to approve the scheduling of a public hearing on this item?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Who, who, who was that who registered the opposition? All right.
If it was Puente?
That was Commissioner Puente who voted against it. All right, all those in favor say aye. We already have that, so it's, it's. All right, so the item passes, there was scheduled a public hearing. Item five is a consideration possible action to approve the Harligen Helps site improvement grant agreement authorizing the disbursement of site improvement grant funds of $1,500 to El Barquero Adult Daycare.
Commissioner, Mayor. Harligen EDC had a program called Harligen Helps, which is not to be confused with the Health Business Program. That's a loan program. Harligen Helps was basically derived from the June 2019 floods. And it was a way for the EDC to help back small businesses in terms of helping them clean up and even do some improvements on, on some of their properties. One of the companies that had done some improvements, but kind of missed the deadline in terms of filing all the paperwork. They had completed all the, all the improvements by the end of May of this year, but they hadn't completed all the paperwork. Completed the paperwork just back in June. And so we decided to bring it back into the EDC board and the board said it was $1,500 that was put to good use. They revamped all the ceiling tiles in their, in their place of business. This is a facility that has over 15 employees. Takes care of a lot of folks there off of L Street between Madison and Monroe. And so the $1,500 was approved by the board yesterday and we need the city commission approval as well.
Thanks, a motion for an approval, Mayor.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ravel. Item six is consideration possible action to approve a proposal from Boy Scout Modesto Abers, who will fund and construct improvements to Hugh Ramsey Nature Park as part of his Eagle Scout project. Modesto, welcome.
Thank you.
We're very glad to have you here with us tonight. It's nice, nice to see a friendly face at our city commission meeting. Please, please go ahead, please go ahead with your presentation. Or Javier, do you want to make any preliminary comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to, of course, invite him, but I have his presentation up so he can, he can get started. Well, if you want to.
Right, and I'll just motion to you when I want to switch the slide, correct? That's fine.
Yeah, just, just let me know to change.
Okay, so my name is Modesto Abers. I'm from Troop 142 with Kevin Abers as a current scout master. I've been in scouting for quite a long time, since about 2012. As soon as I was, as soon as I was eligible, I wanted to join. I've been a Cub Scout since a very young age. Also, as soon as I can join, first grade, I love scouting. I've always been wanting to get my eagle. And I'm finally old enough, I'm finally there, I'm finally ready to actually go through with the project. And so I was very excited when I heard that a nearby birding center would like a bird blind. Small, I also love nature, camping is my favorite aspect of Boy Scouts. And I always wanted to be able to give back. And so this project hopefully kind of fulfills that. And so I'm ready to go to the next slide. Before I actually discuss like the actual, the design of the project, I understand Code 19 is a big, big issue in regards to, because of course we're going to have need to be able to cooperate to help with my project. As one of the big requirements is I need to be able to show leadership and have other boys come and help me out. So I am going to require masks of all the students that join. And of course, the design actually does lend itself to, for us to be able to be six feet apart at all times. And then my family will provide hand, hand sensations for frequent use. And then in addition, we're also going to employ kind of a schedule. So I have friends and I, and also of course fellow scouts in Troop 142 and other troops who would love to help. However, I'm going to allow a max of two for a given hour. So I, so I can keep people distant and far apart so that we're not actually intermingling. Yet, I have other scouts here helping me with my project to give back to the community. And so I can go ahead and go on to the next slide. This is just kind of the design of it. It's showing, it shouldn't take me too long, it's taking about two, two weekends, two, three weekends to build. It's of course going to follow the same structure and I'm super excited to start building it. Of course, given your, you guys' approval. And then I'm also here to answer any questions you all may have regarding the project. But thank you, I really appreciate it.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Modesto or Javier?
So Javier, this is going into Ramsey?
Yes, sir, and so we, we asked Modesto to coordinate the design and the location and everything with the Audubon Society and with the master naturalists that are, that are out there. And so they can help him, of course, locate where the blind, where to locate the blind. And, and you know, any, any other recommendations that they may have?
Yes, I'm going to be working. Go ahead, go ahead.
Are you going to open up to other troops to go help you or is it just going to be done with your troop?
I am going to open up troops to help me. I am, I do have other friends who are in other troops. And I'm sure to be glad to help out as soon as I kind of send the invitation. But yes, but of course, my troop will be fully available to help out.
And the project is being donated by?
We, my parents are healthcare workers, both of them, Lori and Kevin Abers. We have a variety of businesses that are totally willing to donate and help us out. In addition to some other beneficiaries that Troop 142 has been known with.
And it's been accepted already by the Eagle Scout Committee?
It is not being accepted already by the Eagle Scout Committee. Once it's been accepted here, I'm able to go and ask them to approve it finally.
Okay, good.
Hey, Modesto, I just wanted to ask you, you were all also under the guise of J D Givara?
Yes, sir.
And I spoke to him today and he's, was going to leave town, but he sends your congratulations and, and he spoke very highly of you and how you've become from a. how you've become uh from a from a a young man to a, oh, I'm I'm sorry, from a boy to a young man, and and I just wanted to send my congrats to you as well. He spoke very highly of you, and we're we're very proud of what you've got of what you've accomplished.
Um, thank you. Yes, I'm very familiar with Mr. Givara. He's definitely helped me out um over the years. He was my scout master for a very long time. And so it's greatly appreciated to hear from him.
Good job.
When do you turn eighteen, Modesto?
On November fourteenth, which is later this year.
All right, guys, well, we need to approve this project, so he can get it done before he turns.
Mayor, I tell a motion for an approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, congratulations uh on getting this far and and good luck with getting it completed uh soon. Uh, we wish you the best of luck with it, and we thank you for helping to improve our community. So thank you for your leadership, Modesto.
Thank you. I've always been willing to help. It's been great to finally be able to give back. Um, thank y'all, guys. It's been nice talking to y'all. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations.
Out of seven now, which is consideration possible action to authorize staff to contract uh L LED Electric and Lighting Contractors LLC utilizing the Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Program and Little Bids or RFPs for the electrical repairs to Town Hall and to include replacement of the emergency generator.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, um, so this is, uh, we've been wanting to do this for for quite a while. The uh, we want to uh, of course, replace the generator there at Town Hall to be able to to generate power for the entire building in case of a storm. Um, and also to repair the electrical service uh to the building. And so what we what we've done, um, we've um, we've gone out and and visited with with several electrical contractors. Um, and so the first one uh came in a little bit over three hundred thousand um for the turnkey project. Um, they've reviewed the building, they've and they engineered it. Uh, they sized the the generator for it. And so we we thought it was kind of high, so we went out again uh looking for another contractor. We found another one. Uh, except he was going to charge us eleven thousand five hundred just to do the engineering. And so we um, we found another one. Uh, he's a local contractor here from Harlingen, which is LED Electric, and he he does quite a bit of work for the city. Uh, so anyway, he um gave us a quote of a hundred fifty seven thousand two fifty, and he's already done the engineering. Uh, he sized the generator for that building to be able to operate the the entire building um in case of of power loss. And so um the proposal, the quote is attached to the agenda. And so the money was budgeted um in this year's um fiscal year budget.
Staff has recommended amended approval, Mayor, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion for one fifty seven two fifty.
Javier, what kind of what kind of fuel is a generator going to uh use?
It it's going to be diesel.
Okay.
I'll second Victor's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item eight is consideration possible action uh to accept or reject the recommended logo change for the Tony Butler Golf Course.
As Mayor and City Commissioners, um, so with um, when we uh decided to to um uh close down the nine, the Executive Nine, uh, we're looking at several marketing plans, and so one of the things that we wanted to do was to change the logo, um, or we're actually looking at changing the logo, right? We've um, and I and I think the existing logo is attached to the uh to the agenda. And so what we've done, um, we've um gone out and hired a a um design company, uh, marketing and design designer, uh, which is RS Branding. They do a lot of work for the city. And so they came up with several options. Um, and what we've done, we've taken it to the park, I mean, the Golf Advisory Board. And so they have selected um sample E, which is also attached to the to the backup to this agenda. And so what I want to do is just share with you all the samples um that he has given us, just to kind of get an idea uh of what we were looking at. And so that last page is something that we had talked about uh between staff was it was including the H from City Harlingen and then adding a golf ball to the center. And then one of the, one of the Golf Advisory Board members wanted to include a um a mesquite tree, so he he sent us um these images of the of the mesquite tree. But uh, but since then, the the board has selected um sample E. And um staff recommends that that uh logo, uh, but y'all are more than welcome to another one.
I I'm, I I came across this a few years ago when when Water Works was trying to update and up upgrade their logos and whatnot. Um, can you tell me the estimated cost impact this is going to cost you to change out logos, whether it be your through your website? Uh, uh, any signage on the property? I know it's not as extensive as the Water Works having to rebuild trucks and building and whatnot. But what's the financial impact on on making such a change? And uh, I mean, because honestly, I I kind of like the, I'm a real traditional old school. I like the uh I I like the original logo and 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 it it goes to the heritage of of how long that golf course has been there. And this sample, he basically looks like Tom Brady's um hi- his 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 logo. I don't think, um, you know, I I probably could, I mean, something I I just liked the the original logo a little better. But but going back to my original question is, what's the financial impact uh going to be? How much do they charge you to do it?
Well, the the they charge us three hundred and fifty for for the work um to be done for the designs. But um as far as the um, the um, uh, wh- what's going to cost us to to have to change out everything, what we were planning on doing was leaving um all our inventory with the existing logo and whatever, you know, as soon as it sells, then we would replace it with the new logo. Um, but yeah, you're right, we had, we would have to change, uh, for example, the sign that's up front as you drive in on the um on those head walls of the irrigation canals. Um, but that wouldn't cost us very much. I would think it may be a couple hundred dollars. Um, but um, we wouldn't, we wouldn't change any of the logos on the course uh that are already engraved in the granite. We would leave those there. Um, so it would be just a matter of of the um, the logo on any marketing merchandise that we would, we would purchase or or um include in our in our pro shop. But one of the things that we were trying to do is to, and we we did, we did some study on on logos uh in the marketing, and so a lot of the the studies show that you would have to look for a uh or whatever you select as far as the logo, it would have to be, we'd have to fit whatever your services that you're providing. And so um, and I understand, you know, the 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 cactus, uh, you know, is is a um, is a landscape, you know, uh, for the for the valley. And so um, but we wanted to kind of change it up and, you know, make it a little bit more modern. And um, and so that's why we we had gone out and hired um a marketing company.
Hey, Javier?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, yeah. Um, so sample F, how close was it in the voting there?
Well, I'll tell you what, it was, it was very difficult because they were all over the place.
I know.
So we did.
It it depends on personal feelings.
Right, right. So um, you know, they liked sample A, um, they liked sample C, and then at the very end, um, they they selected sample E, and they said, you know what, give me different colors of what that would look like uh with the background and with the with the um color up front. And so we did that, we shared it with them, and so they they said, you know what, let's go with with uh sample, sample E.
Uh, my my only thing is, you know, we're talking about golf. And and I never thought about the Tom Brady aspect that Commissioner Udiba came up with. But I see the Tony Butler on F, and it looks like a T. I mean, right away, I got it.
Right.
Golf ball, the T, Tony Butler. And then the second question is, oh, so so what you're saying with the Hs uh with with the, that that would, that would would also be a logo, or is that just something you all threw out?
Yeah, we just threw that out because um some of the 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 staff from the golf course, you know, were asking, why wouldn't we use our H um that the city has? And so um, so we, I threw out some, you know, I kind of uh I took the H from our logo, and I kind of just inserted the golf ball in the middle, and, you know, it looks looks pretty neat.
Yeah, I I like the golf ball in the center, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with Mr. Udiva here that, you know, tr- tradition is pretty strong. And and so I think the s- the strong part of looking at these is that you're playing up Tony Butler Golf Course, and that's what we're, that's what we're advertising. We're advertising golf.
Correct.
Yeah, and so it it's a personal taste. I mean, to me, the 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 little circles, the swishes next to the B, I I don't see it as a golf ball, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But if that's what the board wants, I I don't know. Uh, it's up to the other commissioners. Nobody else is expressing an opinion like we are.
Javier?
Go ahead, Frank.
Sorry, Mesra, go ahead.
All right, go ahead. No, gentlemen.
Uh, Javier, what was the, what was the cost in this logo that that you mentioned? Was it three fifty?
Yeah, I I believe we we uh we paid the um RS Marketing uh with three fifty for the uh for the work.
Oh, I I was just going to offer to pay for it. I didn't know if it was already paid for or not, but if I can help in any way with the, I guess, the the design, I'd like to get with you later to help out um on behalf of my company.
Well, I I like to, I like to see the golf course thing uh uh the way it is. As it is, I think we have citizens upset that that we're not operating at eighteen holes. Um, like to, you know, and I understand the 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 process, but um I I I I just like to uh keep the original logo.
We we are operating the eighteen holes. It's the nine that we.
I'm sorry, the nine, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So what we, I mean.
But but I just ima- imagined a winner texting coming next year and saying, oh, they, well, maybe some will like it. But they're like, hey, what happened to my sign? You know, you know, so I I just uh, I I would um, I would even like to entertain a motion to to um uh to deny the request to change the logo, if possible.
Javier, what started the process?
Well, what we, it started off when when um when we're working, when we're talking about uh a marketing plan for the golf course. And so we we wanted was a new image. Um, when we op- when we um uh closed down the nine, and we wanted to start the eighteen, and so we wanted to kind of kick everything off um with a new image. And so what we want to do is with the logo, uh, we we've been waiting because a- as far as promoting anything on on the billboards or anything, because we wanted to, i- if we are going to change the logo, we want to make that that change. Um, and so, but it was all about the marketing uh aspect of of the golf course, and so, like I said, we.
Javier, let me ask you a question. I'm sorry, just on a kid on mine. Who who who's in charge of marketing the golf course?
Uh, it's it's our our department, so uh between.
You have somebody assigned to it?
David, myself, and 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 Jeff.
Okay, and and are you guys on Facebook at all?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I don't.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a suggestion, and and I mean, I'm I'm not hearing any wild enthusiasm for, I mean, for this particular logo uh that's being recommended. I mean, I I may be wrong, but I'm not, you know, I don't think anybody's, I I'm not, it doesn't reach out and grab me. I get the idea that, you know, maybe we ought to consider uh because of these new marketing efforts, maybe we ought to consider a a different brand. Why don't we, why don't we table this and let um, let us think, you know, think about it, maybe talk to some people about it. Uh, and and uh see what the uh, see what our constituents think. Uh, you know, maybe maybe do some, you know, everybody can kind of do some informal uh polling about these different logos, and let's let's talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay, so I'll 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 amend my motion to table.
And I'll second that. And I'm second.
There's a motion to second table. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, okay?
Aye.
Well, sign of this table. Item nine, consideration possible action to award uh the voluntary whole life insurance for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one, naming the insurance agents and authorized city manager to sign the contract as recommended by Scott Gibbs.
I'm good, uh, Ephraim, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect, all right. Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you uh for having me today. I'm gonna try to pull this presentation up here and share my screen, so um. All right, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. So um, we uh, we had been asked potentially to, th- this would be a new plan offering. It would be a whole life product to offer to the employees. Uh, just want to reiterate that this, that there's no cost associated to this with uh to the city. This is a complete voluntary product that would be paid for um by the employees. So we issued an RFP um uh for whole life products. Uh, this would go into effect on October first. So you can see, we went out to a very widespread market. We we did get quotes that that came in kind of across the board. So what I've got is, you know, some spreadsheets here. Um, essentially, rates are going to be different. These products are, they're similar, but they're also different. They're filed products with the state. Um, you know, the rates tend to be non-tobacco and tobacco rates. Um, they do kind of have, you know, have cash value that builds up. Um, I think the key key is on the guarantee issue amounts, and then also uh the participation requirements, um, because some of them you know, have higher participation requirements. We just, we want to make sure that um, you know, if we offer this, that we that we can get that. So the first this first page, we've got Unum Trust Mark and Texas Life. Texas Life's a little bit different of a product. It does not have a cash value uh that builds up, so it's really um more like a whole life without a cash value. Um, again, Unum Trust Mark, very good. We do already have an existing policies with Unum uh that are that are not whole life. Um, and you can see, we also had agents that submitted quotes uh on behalf of these. Uh, the next slide's Transamerica, Mass Mutual, and New York Life. Um, I think you can, you know, see here, some of them require twenty percent participation, which uh we find would probably be very kind of hard to get. Um, and then the last three that we have are really colonial uh surety in Aflac. Um, you know, look, you know, looking at all of these um and kind of going through the RFPs, um, we felt like uh our recommendation would would be to go with Unum. We already have products with Unum that would be a little bit easier to administer, you know, by staff. Um, Unum is a large player in the whole life space. Um, so at the end of the day, uh, our recommendation would be to implement Unum. Um, you know, again, we do have other products with Unum. They do a good job. Uh, they do a good job of customer service. Like I said, there's no city dollars involved here, just um simply voluntary uh dollars trying to allow uh the employees to be able to purchase um additional life insurance um should they should they need it. So that's our recommendation, and then I'm I was going to turn it back over to Ephraim to talk a little bit on on the agent side.
Well, uh, can I ask you a question, sir? Did have.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Are are we, do we currently offer a a a term life insurance?
Yes, sir, we do. We, so I mean, we do, we would not necessarily have to offer this. We do offer, we do offer term life insurance through Unum uh voluntary term life. Uh, it just.
So that's my, uh, so if you, my question is, is if we're if we're offering a term life, what's the participation like in that term life? And and um, is this something that the 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 employees are asking for, or you're recommending to see we can convert some of that term life into whole life? Uh, or uh, but I I'd like to see, because term life insurance is uh usually significantly cheaper, correct?
Sure, yes, sir, it is.
So what's the participation like? Uh, just a percentage of employees that that are covered right now with term life?
I honestly, I I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm gonna, I'm gonna guesstimate that it's probably twenty five to thirty percent. The um, and you're right, it good group term life is is much cheaper than whole life. Whole life serves a little bit of a different purpose. Um, you know, it it had been brought up to the city manager's office um to potentially by some employees to to, you know, to offer this, so we did go out. Uh, you know, we did go out.
Are are these pre-tax dollars, or or um, is it something that that the employee can realize the savings and taxes and also the city? the employee can realize the savings in taxes and also the city payroll tax?
Um they can. Yeah, this this will be run through on the section one twenty five plan. So it will um the whole life will be run through that. So they will get it. Uh they will get the rates uh on a pre-tax basis.
So so in a sense, it'll it'll save some some tax dollars, correct?
It will save. Yeah, it it'll save some tax dollars. Not I mean, I I I don't anticipate we're gonna have just a ton of participation, but to to your point, yes, sir, it would save some tax dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mesmar here. I uh I'll reveal to you that I'm uh group one life and accident and health licensed. Um so if this goes into the cafeteria plan, the one twenty five of pre-tax dollars, then does the death benefit, should somebody die, uh that becomes taxable then, correct?
No, sir, it would not. Not on the life insurance policy.
Okay, very good. And then a whole life is super expensive uh compared to term life. And uh on I haven't seen the new policy, but with rates so low, it would take someone about ten years to uh break even on the premiums that they paid uh in order to build up a cash value. Then the other point is as cash value increases, the life insurance decreases so that the payoff is always the same. So I'm, you know, I don't think whole life insurance as a benefit is a good thing to offer.
Okay. And I completely understand, Commissioner. We uh we just we wanted to bring it forward and uh if if the commission, um you know, if the commission deems not to move forward on it, that is that that's your prerogative. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Did the employee, did some employees request this? How how it's what's driving this?
Let let me answer that question. We've been approached over over the years about bringing this to our employees. Uh and uh the approach, the employees themselves have not approached us, but it was uh different vendors that were saying that you know, like folks in the police department, fire department were interested in this coverage. And rather than just uh take the word at it, we decided to go out and actually seek proposals to see which was the best option for employees. Of course, it's entirely optional. Uh it's not something that a lot of employees would probably take advantage of. But I can see maybe some of our uh maybe younger folks out there wanting to participate in this thing.
And on that, uh the old quote is is that a whole life is sold, it's not bought. Uh
Yes, sir.
Large commission to the agent and the consumer ends up paying that large commission.
Yeah, I I'm uh I can I I can just make. I'm not in favor of of moving forward with this type of uh offering to our employees.
And and that is fine. We do have a a pretty high participation in the term life. Uh I think it's probably higher than what Scott had estimated. And uh with Unum, we also provide a a free life insurance to our employees that of thirteen thousand also through Unum. And this they have the option to buy additional term life through you. If you decide to go with it, as far as the agents are concerned, currently, Unum the agents that we're using for Unum are uh Shepherd Walton, which is Aaron Thornburg, and Albert Salinas.
A question. Uh this is an optional plan, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Yes, sir. Participation requirement for Unum, if you'll scroll back to it, what do we have to have? So it's it's a two percent. So two percent of eight hundred uh eight hundred lives is probably, you know, about sixteen bodies. Uh where are you getting eight hundred lives from?
Uh important number of employees.
Number of employees.
And that includes Water Works, Housing, and Airport.
Uh, okay, that's where we have eight hundred lives. Okay. I mean, but but this, I mean, I I I understand us saying no, but I mean, this is just a an offering. If the employee wants it, that's fine. If they don't want it, fine. It just broadens what we uh what we make available to our employees. And if they're seeking a whole life policy for some reason, yes, I I I understand, Mr. Mesmar, but you know, I mean, it's like
All right. Well, what are the wishes of the commission?
I I just think if 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 employees are asking for it, I I would say I'd make the motion that we go ahead and approve this and make it available.
It's up to them. If they want to purchase it, right? They don't they don't have to necessarily buy it?
That is correct.
Okay. I think we should just let the employees. If they want to buy it, they can buy it. If they don't, well, it's up to them.
Is that a second?
I'm not. I'm not in favor.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Commissioner Lial, second by Commissioner Nada Rosa. And I mean, I I understand uh I understand uh Mike's uh Commissioner Mesmar's point. And I'm I've never purchased whole life because I didn't think it was a good deal. But you know, if somebody wants to and and they want and they want to use it as a savings plan, uh you know, that's you know, that would be up to them. Otherwise, they would just, if they want a whole life uh uh product, they can go out on the in the private market and buy buy a whole life product. But all right, well, we have any other discussion on this?
Uh question, just to clarify, in this Unum, with the agents being uh uh from Shepherd Walton and uh Texas Insurance. So just so that it's clear in in
That's your motion, Commissioner Lial?
That is my motion, sir.
Okay. Clarification. All right. Uh so all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nine. Opposed.
Okay, I couldn't. I think I only heard two ayes. Is that right, Commissioner Lial?
I only heard you ayes. I only heard Ruben and I. I didn't hear Puente.
Yeah, I should take the
He's on mute.
And then Commissioner Mesmar, uh Puente, and
Can can we take the I I have I have
Okay, don't don't interrupt me. It's too hard to conduct these meetings as it is. Uh Commissioner Ruben, did you vote aye? Did you vote for it or against it?
I voted against this here, but I'm just asking if they can remove the 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 presentation so I can see you all.
Oh, yep. Hold on two seconds. Sorry about that. Stopped my hair.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that, guys.
All right. I I believe the motion failed. Is that correct, Amanda?
That's what I understand there.
All right.
I believe that Commissioner Puente voted aye.
Correct.
Oh, you voted aye, Commissioner Puente?
Yes, believe it or not.
The motion passed.
Yeah, so it's thirty two, mayor.
Okay.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay, all right. Tough to tough to see everybody. All right, I'll be I'll be glad when we can get back together in person.
I'll be glad when I can come visit you. I said I'll be glad when I can come visit you guys.
Okay, item ten is a presentation by the Planning and Development Director on storm water pollution awareness and prevention.
First, the commission, good afternoon. As you know, the city of Harlingen has an MS four permit with TCEQ.
I'm gonna need you to speak more. Uh I'm gonna need you to get closer to your microphone, please.
Can you hear me better?
Keep going and I'll tell you.
As you know, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
A little bit.
As you know, the city of Harlingen has an MS four permit with TCEQ for the city to comply with stormwater quality regulations enacted by Congress through the nineteen seventy two Clean Water Act. Harlingen is a member of the Lower Rio Grande Valley Stormwater Task Force, which is a regional coalition of twenty nine local governments. This organization combines resources to help the members be in compliance with the Clean Water Act. This presentation is to help us be in compliance with the MS four permit. Uh what is stormwater? Stormwater is untreated water created from rain that does not soak into the ground but runs into nearby waterways. Stormwater does not flow into a wastewater treatment system. It flows directly into our surface waters. What we do on the land affects the water quality and the habitat of our creeks and rivers. It also affects our quality of life, our fisheries, and our recreation. Why clean water is important? If all these life forms depend on clean water for their existence. What is an illicit discharge? Illicit discharge is any discharge of pollutants or non-stormwater materials allowed to enter the storm drainage systems from overland flows or direct dumping of materials into a catch basin. Examples of illicit discharge is sand and dirt from construction sites washing into drains, dumping toxic chemicals into drains, chemical and fuel spills, overuse of fertilizer fertilizers and pesticides, and trash allowed to go into the storm drains. Grass and tree care. Do not overwater grass surfaces. Use only the amount of water needed. Overwatering is wasteful and could lead to erosion of the soil into our drains. Ensure sprinklers are properly adjusted to only water grass and other vegetation. Water on the sidewalks and streets can lead to sediments and/or chemicals flowing into the storm drains. Pick up grass clippings always. Do not sweep them into the storm drain or allow them to be washed into one after a storm. Clean fallen leaves from from gutters and around storm drains before they are allowed to enter into the storm drainage system. Good housekeeping. Make sure that there are no discharges from the building to stormwater to doorways or other pathways. Always report spills. Promptly clean clean up any spills. Clean the floors and do not allow the wash water to discharge outside. Use biodegradable cleaning solvents whenever practical. If you have stormwater pollution concern from for any areas within the city of Harlingen, please contact the Code Compliance Division of the Planning and Development Department at nine five six two one six five two zero zero. If you see illegal dumping within the city of Harlingen, please call the same number, nine five six two one six five two zero zero, and give a description of what is being dumped. A picture of the vehicle with a license plate showing can really help the division uh to issue citations. So stormwater pollution is everybody's problem and it's everybody's role to protect our water systems. And this concludes the presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Uh I'm unmuted. Okay, I was looking. You know, Javier, uh one of the calls that I get very often is the lawn services blowing the clippings rather than sweeping them up and dragging them off. They blow them out into the middle of the street. And and I and I get that. I mean, at least once a month, my phone will ring and somebody's upset because they saw lawn service blowing everything. Is 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 that part of this or is that not part of this?
Yes, it is.
And 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 so are are they to call the fifty two hundred or the other number?
The two one six fifty two hundred.
Okay.
Yes.
Any any other questions here? This is a a requirement regarding our TCEQ permit to make this presentation. We appreciate the presentation. If there are no other uh questions, then we'll go on to the next item, which is item eleven, a public hearing in action to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one eleven, zoning Article twelve, Section one eleven dash three twenty nine, gasoline stations by deleting this section in its entirety. Okay, Javier?
Yes, mayor. Uh we have a a project that is proposed, the Circle K Project at the corner of Ninth and Tyler Wells, between Tyler and Harrison along the east side of uh Ninth Street. And uh it's a Circle K Project. It's in a property that belongs to the school district. But we have a language in our ordinance that is keeping this uh project from from happening. Let me show you the this the site plan uh for the project. So this is Tyler over here. Over here is Ninth Street and over here is Harrison. The property, like I said, there's an existing building over here that belongs to the school district that if the project happens, it will be demolished. There's a parking lot over here. This is where they're proposing to build the store, the parking. This this will be the gas pumps right here and then the tanks over here next to Tyler Avenue. The the language that we have that is keeping this project from from happening is that uh the ordinance does not allow gas tanks within five hundred feet of a school. And so there is a school uh at approximately four hundred and fifty feet, so it's fifty feet shy uh to be in compliance uh with the ordinance. So that uh that's what's happening here.
Javier, but we also have a school right next door. If you look at that diagram and that's that's goes like fifty feet away, which is a Victory Baptist.
We uh we believe that that's just a church and we we
No, it's not. It's a private school.
Okay, well
And and you see that building that's up on top in the back alley? Those are the classrooms. The 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 building in the front is the old Saint Paul Church, which I'm a member of that church. That's the original Saint Paul Church building that got moved to that location.
Okay, well, it's a
So so the so the diagram, again, the 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 proximity is is a lot closer.
Well, these are these are schools are are keeping this uh project from from happening.
So the question I have is, um in reading the the backup, we're the we're we're like the only city that has this five hundred foot rule? Is there a
Correct.
So if we if we delete this out of the ordinance, is there a fifty foot rule? That is part of the state?
The the TC if if uh I have more information in in the PowerPoint, so I think some of the questions will be answered.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I'll shut up.
Uh so let me I guess let me continue the PowerPoint and then I can answer questions as as you go along. Um so in like in Austin and and in Washington, where they are allowed to adapt new laws and remove laws, you have the same authority to adapt laws and to remove laws. Uh this Circle K Project is in a property that belongs to the school district. The Circle K Corporation uh has a contract with the school district. Uh this went before the zoning board of adjustments for a variance for it on July first, but it was uh denied. Uh for that meeting, notices were sent to all property owners within two hundred feet and nobody showed up in in a position. Uh it almost passed. The three three board members approved it. Uh but we needed four for the variance to be approved. There are tremendous economic benefits for the pro for the project. Uh the property right now does not generate any property taxes, so if the project happens, uh it will it will be private property again. And uh the Circle K is intending to invest three million dollars in the in the property, which will bring a property taxes to the city. Also, uh sales taxes will be generated once uh once the building is open. These uh stores bring bring considerable sales taxes to the community. And we're also looking at jobs, uh twenty to thirty direct jobs and then several indirect jobs. The the fire code only addresses uh unattended uh tanker trucks. So that's all that it says in the fire. So the fire code is is totally okay uh with the with the gas tanks. We received a a letter from the consultant that Circle K uh uses. So he uh he's the one that brought up uh this consulting firm, uh Circle K uses them for all their projects nationwide. And so they told us in the in the forty years of this firm doing this kind of work, they have never encountered an ordinance like Harlingen. So this is very unique.
Okay, Javier, let me stop you right there because you mentioned that to me several times. Um there's there are other cities that have them, right? But they go through what's called a a certain um conditional use permit, which is similar to our special use permit. So it's not like 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 they don't have an an avenue to go through. That's kind of misleading that you're saying that Harlingen is is so bad with businesses that and we don't want them here, that we're making this so difficult for a gas station to do that. So uh that that uh every city, every city has some sort of path that 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 they go through. And we have we have passed and that got denied on two boards. Okay, so uh and the extra protection that Harlingen has is that we have this particular ordinance.
Yes, but what I'm saying is what I'm saying is that no city has a minimum distance requirements to schools. But yes, you are correct. McAllen requires a McAllen requires a conditional use permit for this type of projects. And what I'm talking is specifically an ordinance that has minimum distance to schools. And that's what the consultant is talking about. In his letter, he explains the process of what they go through. So you have engineering plans, they go to the city building department, they go to the fire marshal's office. Once approved, a permit goes to the...
And Javier, they've been denied on the building. As the law sits right now, they would be denied currently, correct, under the building codes?
No, the only thing keeping this project is this 500-foot rule.
No, because the way I read the building codes that we just passed a couple of weeks ago, the 2016 ones, have requirements.
I...
And I think that's on the next item to delete that. So if it goes through the... See, that's incorrect again, but let me let you continue. Let me let you finish your presentation.
So basically, there's a process with TCEQ to get the permits. And so TCEQ gave us a letter in which they're telling us the only requirement that TCEQ has is that they have to be not closer than three feet from a structure.
But TCEQ doesn't...
Alright, well, let's let him finish his presentation, please.
I thought he was done. I'm sorry.
Building Inspections Department and Fire Prevention Division, they have no objections to the removal of these ordinances. And this is the language that we are asking to remove from the books so that the project can happen. This went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 22nd, and no one spoke in opposition to removing this language from the ordinance, and they recommended approval with a 6 to 0 vote. And that's it.
Javier, on this meeting that you're talking about on July 22nd, were all the, in that area, were notices sent out to all the residents and the businesses in that area about the P&amp;Z meeting?
No, because this is a general change to the ordinance. It's not project-specific. But for the variance with the zoning board of adjustment, we did send notices to all property owners, and no one showed up in opposition.
And how many, within what, 500 feet or...?
200 feet all around.
Okay, and so, I believe at the last P&amp;Z, not the meeting on the 22nd, but the one prior to that, it was my understanding that the P&amp;Z denied the permit in the variance.
No, because we have two different boards. One of them is the zoning board of adjustments, and the other one is the Planning and Zoning Commission. The zoning board of adjustment entertains variances to the zoning ordinance. So the first step for this company was to pursue a variance with the zoning board of adjustments on the 500-foot rule. And it almost passed. Three members voted approval and two voted denial. But the state law requires four votes, so the variance failed.
So they were denied?
Yes, but that was with the zoning board of adjustment. And with the Planning and Zoning Commission, it only went once, and it was approved unanimously.
And so what's their next step, sir? They would have to go to the district court, correct? To appeal it?
Yeah, that's...
That would be the next step, right?
Yeah, if this only...
But if it didn't come to the commission, and they're just following the process the way we have it set up, that they would have to go to the district court to let the district court decide that, correct? Because that's how serious they take the laws, right?
Correct.
We can't overturn their decision, correct?
Yes, but you do have the authority to adopt laws and remove laws.
Right, so we can just, like, okay.
But, okay, we can't override the district court is the question. Is that not right?
No, we cannot override the board, Commissioner.
The zoning board of adjustments.
Oh, we can't override the zoning board of adjustments? There is no appeal to us. They have to appeal to the district court. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, let me, go ahead, go ahead Mayor.
Well, let me go to the...
Oh, yes.
Let me go to the public hearing. I know that there's item A. Amanda, did anyone, I'll open the public hearing, but did anyone sign up for this public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Alright, then I'll close the public hearing. And we'll go to the item. We'll have discussion on the item, but let's go ahead and take the item, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Zoning, Article 12, Section 111-329, Gasoline Stations by deleting this section in its entirety. And I believe we need to ask the attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Zoning, Article 12, Section 111, 329, Gasoline Stations by deleting this section in its entirety, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Okay, before I call for a motion, is there any other, are there any other questions for Javier?
Yes, I had a question, Mayor. Javier, you said that they're gonna employ 20 to 30 people?
That was, that's what I heard.
I've never seen Javier the gas station employ more than 10 people with that. But 20 to 30 is a pretty big... What's the square footage of the property? Is it like a superstore or? I've never seen one, not even the one, the gas station that's between us and five footers carries 30 employees, and that's a truck center.
Okay, so here's my question. Are you done?
I just want to know if his numbers were right, that that location's gonna hire between 20 and 30 people.
Well, how many people do you normally think that would be there in one ship?
Most of the Circle K, most of the Stripes run between four and six employees, and that includes their manager.
Okay.
And they're 24/7.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, they're great operation. They operate themselves. I mean, you got to cover, and that's pretty much it. But I just want a clarification, because you said they're gonna hire 20 to 30 people at that location, and I find that hard to believe.
I think Commissioner Al, are you...
Yeah, I've got a question. So, we're not talking about a Stripes, we're not talking about a Circle K. We're talking about making a change to an ordinance. So this is my question, Javier. Other cities, if I'm a Stripes and I'm coming into McAllen, Texas, what is the process in order for me to put in a gasoline station? You said it requires some sort of an approval.
In McAllen, they do require a conditional use permit.
A conditional use permit?
But we don't have that in Harlingen.
Okay, and Brownsville?
Brownsville, I'm not sure about.
Okay, so, you know, my fear, here's my fear, just... We're talking about removing a tank storage portion of this to allow them to come in. Are they gonna have to go, so once we remove that, are they gonna have to go through any process to notify the people that are gonna be around them that they want to put a gasoline station in and whether or not... Because right now, that building is not set up to be a retail, is it?
The zoning is a general retail district, and a gasoline station is allowed by right.
Without having to ask any of the neighbors?
Correct. Now, the ordinance could be changed to be similar to McAllen, where, you know, a special use permit will be required. So that's an option for your consideration.
Javier, I have a question real quick. Okay, so, I don't care about other cities. I'm more concerned about Harlingen. So let me ask, here's a different scenario. Is if we just leave it as it is, and somebody wants to come in, I want to come in and open up a Stripes. I have to go through P&amp;Z, correct? And the zoning board as well. And at that point, they can approve a variance of letting me put in gas tanks at that time if they wanted to.
Right now, if the zoning is general retail and there are no schools within 500 feet, they will be allowed administratively.
Okay, and so, I'm just a little concerned about how this was denied, whichever board it was, last month. And now overnight, we're changing this because 7-Eleven wants to come in. The other concern I had is, as big as this store is going to be, 79, when this ordinance was implemented, it was due to traffic that was coming in and out of the area. And that was a concern. I'm sure it's quadrupled since 1979, so it just doesn't seem like it's the right timing to do this. And I also noticed that all the Stripes and other convenience stores like this are all on the ends of Tyler and Harrison, which is more of like a safe zoning, I guess, for lack of better words. And so opening this up to anybody wanting to open up gas stations up and down Harrison and Tyler, I have a problem with it because part of this is in my district, first of all, and secondly, I'm more concerned about the school and the churches and the other businesses. Now, I know notices were sent out, but I think there needs to be some kind of campaign to let the public know about this. And so, if I can, or whenever I can, I'd like to entertain a motion to table this if we can, so we can get a little bit more research, because this just seems like we're really rushing into it, and there's still confusion as to what or why this is happening.
Frank, if you make that motion, I'll second that, because I think you're correct. We need to, you know, I don't want to hurt business, but you know, you've got a valid point about traffic and everything else. I just, let's just table it.
Okay, then if I can at this time, I'd like to make a motion to table this item on the agenda for a future meeting.
And I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion to second to table. There's no discussion on a motion to table, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Alright. The motion carries items tabled. We'll bring it back at the next meeting.
I believe Mesmar was a nay.
He was. Alright. Well, there's a public hearing and possible action to amend City of Harlingen Code Ordinances, Chapter 103-B buildings and building regulations, Article 1, Section 103-2, Restrictions on permits for storage or dispensation facilities by deleting this section in its entirety.
Mayor, considering the fact that we just tabled item 11, staff is asking that we table item 12 as well.
Motion to table item 12?
We have a second from Commissioner Puente. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion is tabled. Item 13, board appointments.
I have an answer.
I have one. Anybody else? Okay, I was waiting my turn. I'm gonna be appointing Michael E. Alex to the EDC.
Who's he replacing, Commissioner?
He's gonna be replacing Michael Lamon.
Mike's a good pick. He's a good guy. He'll do well.
Thank you.
I'm not sure for an approval.
Is there any, are there any other board appointments? Alright, hearing none. I did not hear any other board appointments, so now Commissioner Uribe, if you'd like to make your motion to approve the board.
Yes, I made a motion for approval for Commissioner's appointment.
Frank's guys.
Second from Commissioner Mesmar.
No, Frank. Give it to Frank.
It would be Commissioner.
Alright, all those in favor say aye. Motion carries. 14 is executive closed session on the following items. A, attorney-client consultation pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code, receive legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations under Chapters 143 and 174 of the Texas Local Government Code, and related to collective bargaining labor agreement between the city and duly-recognized bargaining agent for the city's law enforcement personnel and Harlingen Police Officers Law Enforcement Association. And B, attorney-client, attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.0712 Texas Government Code, to receive legal advice and legal counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, obligations, possible resolution or related legal issues arising out of acceptable expenditures for temporary hazard pay for police and fire personnel under the CARES Act. Is there a motion to go on to executive session?
Some of them.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to leave this Zoom meeting, but we will return because there is an item that we might take action on. And we're going to go into a separate Zoom meeting to talk with our lawyer, but once that session is over, we will return to this live stream. Alright, so let's leave and we'll meet the other Zoom meeting. I think we've got Commissioner Uribe. So we are out of executive session at 7:21 PM. Back in open session, and we're going to go to item 15, discussion and possible action to provide a temporary COVID-19 hazard pay stipend to the fire and/or police department civil service employees.
Mayor, Commissioner's staff is recommending that we utilize some of our CARES funds to provide a temporary hazard pay for our sworn personnel in fire and police, our civil service personnel, excluding our chiefs and our assistant chiefs within both departments. The amount that we are recommending is $300 a month per two months, for a total of $600. Again, we're gonna utilize CARES funds for those stipends, monthly stipends. The staff is recommending approval. Again, this is not increasing the rank of chief or assistant chief within the fire and police departments. And we will start that stipend in August and for September, both months.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, I think this is a great use of the CARES Act funding that we received and is earmarked for the City of Harlingen, and I want to congratulate the city manager and the city attorney's office for finding a way to make this happen. So congratulations. Thank you. Item has passed, and so that is the last item on the agenda. So we are now adjourned. Everyone have a good evening and stay well. We'll see you soon.
Good night, guys.